Okay, welcome to our city council work session meeting. Today is Tuesday, September sixth, two thousand twenty-two. By my watch, it's five thirty P M. As you notice, I am not the mayor of Santaquin. I'm filling in for Mayor Dan Olson this evening. I'm Mayor Pro Tan Lin Meekum, and I'll be conducting both meetings tonight in his absence. He has a family thing, so we wish him very best tonight with his family. Um, roll call, uh, we are all here except for Mayor Olson. Uh, again, we excuse him. Betsy's on her way in right now, and we'll have a full council. I would like to ask if there's someone who would lead us in the pledge of allegiance tonight?
I will.
Thanks, Betsy.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Also, we'd like to start our meeting tonight with either an invocation or an inspirational thought. Do we have a volunteer?
I have a thought.
Go ahead.
The privilege to work is a gift, the power to work is a blessing, and the love of work is success. David O'McKee.
That's powerful, huh? The love of work? Love that. That's good. Thank you. Okay, we're gonna jump right into our discussion items tonight. Uh, number one, moderate income housing strategies and implementation. We have to have this ready for a document that needs to be signed soon. So, Jason, I think you're taking that discussion, right?
Yeah, I will. So just as a reminder to the council and to the public, uh, state legislation has has required that cities update their moderate income housing plan by October first. Uh, they've they've given a a menu of of strategies which cities can choose from. Uh, and then it's required that we have a specific strategy planned, uh, implementation plan, sorry, for each of those strategies. Um, and we'll get into that um, in a little bit. But for for purposes of 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 tonight, uh, there's no action tonight. This is a work meeting, but we've had uh, discussions in the past about about some strategies that that the council was interested in exploring. Uh, we have noticed a public hearing, and this will be on the planning commission meeting next Tuesday uh, for them to review and to provide a recommendation to the council on because this is an element within the general plan. Um, for purposes of tonight's discussion, I prepared, uh, I have four strategies that you can take a look at. As a reminder, based on the characteristics of Santaquin City and the fact we don't have a transit station, uh, we are required to have three strategies. Uh, again, I'm required for just to give you some some strategies to look through and 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 to have some options. So getting right into that, um, and maybe before I start, um, some language, uh, the language that, uh, you know, uh, that's been given to the cities as a resource to to help meet this this new these new state regulations. I just wanted to read one paragraph that kind of describes what, uh, uh, you know, the implementation plan for the 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 strategies that we choose needs to look like. Uh, the jurisdiction should determine an appropriate and realistic implementation plan to bring these strategies to life over the next five years. This implementation plan should be developed in a way that there's flexibility so that the jurisdiction can make adjustments as needed over time. The implementation should also identify specific measures and benchmarks for the strategies. This allows the jurisdiction and general public to understand exactly what needs to happen and creates a method of method of verifying and determining if the moderate income housing plan is being met. So based on this language, I've I've drafted some some strategies. And again, this is really more of a preliminary look for the council and and love any guidance that you have as we move this forward to the planning commission. Um, and then it's anticipated that the following Tuesday, um, the the council would have this on their agenda for consideration of approval. Again, the the deadline is October first, so you know, we're now into the month of September, and so this is something that we need to 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 address. So for purposes of updating the moderate income housing plan, uh, I've really kind of changed the formatting so that it matches, uh, our current general plan. Obviously, uh, I've been been doing these proposed amendments in in a Word document. Uh, so I've I've got that all switched over, and and as I went through, we've we've updated, uh, the numbers. Uh, I should say we did that a few months ago, uh, before Ryan Harris left. He he helped with that. And then down towards the bottom, there was a there was a few bits, uh, that needed to be updated. Uh, Santaquin City has has repealed, uh, the code related to flag lots, so there was some language related to that. Um, and then some some just terminology related to to accessory dwelling units that that I changed there. Um, but for purposes of of the council's discussion tonight, um, basically what I've done here is instead of goals and policies which we had before, I've changed it accordingly to strategies and their corresponding implementation plans. So bef- in our current moderate income housing element, we've got these these goals and policies. So to to be in line with state code, I've changed the strategy and implementation plans, and here are the four strategies I've put together. Again, we're only required to do at least three. I guess if you like all four, you could do that, and and there could be some incentive in having four strategies because it has been indicated that if if cities don't meet this requirement, then there could be transportation, uh, funding withheld. Uh, but they've also indicated that if cities, uh, are competing for funding, then then there could be some priority put towards the city that has more strategies. Um, so something to keep in mind. So that the the draft strategies I have for the council to just look at and give me some feedback on tonight are, uh, strategy number one, create or allow for and reduce regulations related to internal or detached accessory dwelling units in residential zones. I should say that these strategies are just basically word for word, uh, chosen from the the menu of strategies the state, uh, provided to the 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 cities. So that's word for word from from that list. The implementation plan which 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 I've drafted would be that Santaquin City will modify zoning regulations to expand the area where detached accessory dwelling units are permitted. Considerations to permit detached accessory dwelling units in more residential zones will be considered on an annual basis. We have an idea of how it'll move forward, and we have kind of a benchmark or or kind of a a an expectation of when when this this consideration or or when this this change, uh, can can happen. So, um, that's one of the strategies the council identified as one that they they liked. Um, and feel free to jump in if you have questions or comments. Uh, strategy number two, reduce, waive, or eliminate impact fees related to moderate income housing. The implementation plan for that would be Santaquin City will work with an engineering firm to study utility efficiencies from accessory dwelling units which could proportionally reduce impact fees for accessory dwelling units. The city will aim to have a study started in the two thousand twenty-three fiscal year and consider modifications to impact fees upon completion of the study accordingly. So it's not just we're reducing impact fees, but we're gonna we're gonna actively do a study to understand exactly how, um, how much more efficient, uh, say detached accessory dwelling units, right? I guess any accessory dwelling unit for that matter, uh, is, and then have the impact fees, uh, you know, be adjusted, uh, accordingly. Okay? Strategy number three.
Is Jason, just eliminating or reducing the the impact fees, is that enough to satisfy the strategy?
Well, it says reduce, waive, or eliminate impact fees. So I think a reduction would would would, um, we need that that strategy. But I mean, really, it's still legislative action, and it'd be the discretion of the council of how how far they wanna go with that. Strategy number three, zone or rezone for higher density or moderate income residential development in commercial or mixed-use zones near major major transit investment corridors, commercial centers, or employment centers. Um, the implementation plan for that would be Santaquin City will work with landowners, developers, and builders to develop and or redevelop property that is commercially zoned and identified as being effectively located near public transportation, commercial activities, and other services to include moderate income housing. Santaquin City officials will identify specific areas for consideration and will proactively contact property owners to explore opportunities. This is a pretty broad brush, but there's there's been some specific areas that the city has looked at in the past as as maybe being, uh, a way to to address some concerns with certain property, uh, but maybe do it in a way that also meets a moderate income housing, um, uh, strategy that the state, uh, uh, has has, uh, uh, laid out. So, um, you know, without going into details of what those specific projects are, uh, I think there's certainly some redevelopment opportunities that that could, uh, open up the doors for more commercial development, but also address some some concerns with with some housing that is that is less desirable uh, and replace it with with maybe a more, uh, desirable moderate income housing type. So that's strategy three. Strategy four, develop a moderate income housing project for residents who are disabled or fifty-five years old or older. The implementation plan, very much like the last one, would be Santaquin City will work with landowners, developers, and builders to develop and or redevelop property for a senior-oriented community that qualifies as moderate income housing. The key with this is that it's not just allowing for senior housing, but allowing for senior housing in a way that still is moderately, you know, is for moderate income, uh, demographic. Uh, Santaquin City officials will identify specific areas for consideration, will proactively contact property owners to to explore opportunities. So those are four, uh, strategies and their corresponding implementation plans that I've drafted. Um, and I think that's probably sufficient, and and you know, some of these things are are things that have already been discussed and and planning commission and council have already indicated as something that they were leaning towards anyways. So, uh, again, it it was good to wait a little bit so we can we can amend our moderate income housing plan, um, um, beforehand and get credit with the state for making those changes that that qualify for providing moderate income housing. So, uh, with that said, I'd love to hear your your direction, and before I take it to the planning commission, it'd be great to to see if if this is in line, if it's way off, if it's if it's close, if, you know, or if it's something that you think is is drafted such that that is worthy for the planning commission to review and react to.
Jason, is it even possible to have or do we have a definition of what moderate income would be fine, as far as numbers?
So the state already defines moderate income housing.
It was in there as you were scrolling.
And and it might already even be in our plan. I bet it's here at the top, but it basically is is eighty percent of the A M I, which is the average median income.
Do we have specifics for our area?
Well, so and that's that's what all these these numbers are, is it is it talks about, uh, kind of where we're at. Again, I I say this just as a reminder, the moderate income housing plan is not a quota. There's not a certain number of units that we need to have. The the moderate income housing, uh, requirement that by the state is really, uh, strategies and and a plan to implement it in your community. So we do have data here that talks about what Santaquin City currently has, but it shouldn't be looked at as a quota, and and I know sometimes residents say we have enough of it. Well, it's it's not really, that's that's not what the state's asking for. They're asking that we are proactively, uh, planning for and have strategies to to continue to implement it in our community.
So a household with one resident could qualify if if they made fifty-two thousand four fifty or less?
Uh, yes, I believe so.
Am I reading that correctly?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And again, th- and this is something that that will be provided to you, obviously, because, uh, for remanding the plan, then you're gonna see the entire plan, and so you'll have an opportunity to read through it, or I can send it to you earlier if you if you'd like to to read through it. But, uh, um, but yeah, that's.
That'd be good if you could, thank you.
That's that's the the state's, uh, um, that's the state's definition for what moderate income housing is, eighty percent, uh, of A M I.
Yeah, if you could send those out, that'd be great.
Okay, yeah, I'll do that.
Other concerns or questions on the four strategies?
I think they're very well worded, so good job on that. Well done. Um, I think that you took our direction from, um, a few weeks ago and, um, crafted these in a way that hopefully will meet the expectation and the requirement of the state, but still allow, um, current council and future leaders to, um, adapt and adjust as needed. They're not so specific that it that it binds anyone to a specific piece of property or a specific number count or anything like that, but it, um, it gives ideas and and like I said, hopefully meets the requirement.
Do you, I mean, you don't have to decide tonight, but is there, uh, do you like all the strategies? Is there is there, uh, three that you like more than the fourth? I mean, just any direction that way would would be great as well.
Well, here's the thing, I think it's a double-edged sword, right? Because if if priority is gonna be given for funding applications to cities who potentially have implement more strategies or have a plan for more strategies, then we don't wanna do the bare minimum, right? However, if we're gonna be expected to choose a different set of strategies every time the state requires us to update it, then the more we choose, the fewer options we have next time.
Right.
So it's a double-edged sword.
Right, right, right.
So I I think personally, I'm happy with the four, and I will look forward to hearing what the planning commission says about it and recommends.
And I'll keep those four there, and and that could be a consideration is to keep all. I I think if we had four in there, uh, it doesn't necessarily mean that we have to meet all four, but I think, uh, it it gives us options to to still choose from the three. Uh, I don't think that's the the state's intent is is that if you put it in there, then you you have to to, you know,
Implement it.
To address all of them. Uh, but I think we they intend for us to address at least three or at least have have some action or something to show for, uh, uh, you know, meeting these these or or implementing these strategies that we choose.
They're intending on accountability, basically.
We've talked about the first two. Um, so I I would think those two we for sure would include. The other two.
And they really are related as well.
Yeah, they are. They go together, and and the other two, I, yeah, like you said, I I don't know what the financial implications are. Um, and nobody knows, we don't have a crystal ball down the road, but, um, if it's gonna cost us a whole bunch of money upfront to have four, then maybe we stick with three, but if it's gonna allow us to get some extra funding, I I don't know how we decide that. It's just a discussion we're gonna have to have and try to decide.
Well, I I don't say that like like that's a really, I mean, it could come into play. I think it was more of of maybe just a an additional carrot on a stick for cities to to have more than than the the bare minimum strategies. The likelihood of of being in a situation where that happens is probably slim to none, but it still could happen. And I think if we're we have, you know, the four strategies rather than the bare minimum of three, it puts us in a situation where where if that ever did happen, then we we'd probably be in a pretty good spot.
We're showing that we're trying to do more than the minimum.
Right.
So if I may, from a budgetary aspect of it, I don't see any of these costing the city a significant amount of money. Number two is probably gonna be the most expensive to go look at our I our master plans, our I F F Ps and I F As, to have those reevaluated for potential lowering of impact fees. So I can see that that could have a budgetary impact. Not having been through any of the other ones, I I I can't commit that there's not gonna be any cost there, but strategy three and four, if we're going and working with developers, I mean, I guess there could be some some incentive or something there. If we went and did some infrastructure or something of that nature, that they needed a bigger sewer line or a bigger water line or something like that, that could help with those two strategies, then then there could be some costs associated there. But one of the things that I would caution about is that some of these, the 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 strategies that we don't have listed here are develop this or develop that. The the city really isn't a developer. We can help encourage development, help go talk to landowners and figure out if there isn't something that we can help develop, help them develop, but but we as a city are not developers.
That's what I was uncomfortable with about some of them.
Yeah, that that definitely is the case. And so I I think these are, Jason's done a great job with with putting these strategies together and even some implementation plans to to what we could potentially do.
Well, and even to play off of that a little bit, and I didn't think of it this way, but you know, that strategy number two, I've been I've kind of written it in a way where it sounds like we would start a study, but really, we we have, we always have master plan updates that are happening, and and maybe I can word it in a way that that insinuates that as we do our master plan updates, we specifically look at detached accessory dwelling units and efficiencies they can create and and have the impact fee studied with with each one because, you know, it's it's gonna be obvious that maybe sewer and water are gonna be the main ones that 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 may, uh, you know, may highlight some efficiencies that could reduce impact fees, uh, say as opposed to parks, which, you know, may not really play that much into it. But maybe I can modify the wording in a way that that alludes to to looking at it as we're we're working through those those master plan updates, which we do anyways.
Regularly.
Um, well, it just so happens on a five-year basis.
Yeah.
Right.
So I I actually really like that idea a lot, and I'm glad that that that's being brought up. I think that that would be a really good addition to number two.
Okay.
Because we do those anyway, so those that have most recently been done, I don't think it would be wise to set ourselves up to have to redo them sooner than necessary.
Right.
But to set forth the expectation, we ju- y- you know, if if any questions are asked by the state officials, we just updated this last year or two years ago, so the next time this is due, we're gonna include this as an implement in this, uh, uh, or as an element in the study.
Right, and that way it doesn't come across as, oh, wow, we gotta account for this in the next budget to set aside, you know, you know, X amount of money for for a a new study. It'll just fall in line when we when we do the
When it's scheduled.
The next update.
And budgeted for, yeah, I love that idea.
Cause if we have to, if we had to update each one of our master plans and I F F Ps and I F As, it could be ten thousand, fifteen thousand dollars apiece. You're talking seventy-five plus thousand dollars to be able to do that. So with that, that's a great strategy to have Jason just change that that strategy that as those plans get re-upped, updated, then we can address it at that point in time, which which will all of them be in the next five years.
Yeah, I like that idea.
Councilman Hathaway Sidaway, any comments, concerns on the four?
I'm gonna make a comment, but it's not necess- it's probably the comment, maybe you guys are gonna know I'm gonna say it anyway because I want it on the record. I just think that the state's pushing this down cities throats, which really irritates me. I mean, I have no problem with the, there's the state coming up with strategies to help with the situation, but to put any kind of restrictions on funding or whatever, to me, that's what makes it ridiculous. But with that being said, I wanna say good job, Jason. I I like what you've done there, so I'm with Betsy. Let's let the planning commission see what they.
Councilman Sidaway?
Yeah, echo that, exactly.
Any other thoughts?
Good.
Yep.
Wow, you must have done a great job for us to have so little to comment on.
Well, we've only been talking about it a while now. But he did do a great job.
Yeah.
Okay, awesome. So we move on to upcoming agenda items. Do you wanna handle that, Norm? You gonna go through the agenda items for tonight?
Yes, I will. Um, yeah, pull up the one for just the agenda. You don't need to pull up the packet.
There you go.
So, uh, three sets of minutes will be coming before you. I don't know if you have comments, I'm sure Emily can help with that if you've not already sent them to her. Uh, the bills will be coming up. This is all on the consent agenda. Fire department out-of-state training for four of our fire department staff, uh, highly recommended by by Chief Lind to to have these folks go to that and and help them to get better trained. Uh, resolution oh three, nine oh oh nine oh three, two thousand twenty-two for the Williams subdivision, deferral agreement. I have one, two, two items on there that I need to pull up. In fact, I can show you that really quick. The the what was in the packet was off by two sets of wording. In in section number one, uh, we need to strike out the copy of which is a attached here too as exhibit B. There is no exhibit B in this particular one. And then down in number twenty, or just below twenty-eight, they had it had an old date in there, so we updated those two dates. So as we approve that, or i- if you approve that, I would just, whoever makes a motion to just put the two cleanup items that we have on there that were brought to our attention from legal counsel for that item. Uh, volunteer of the month, Ron Peterson, will make that presentation during the the regular part of the meeting. And then two more resolutions, oh nine oh one, two thousand twenty-two. Um, sorry, that will be for the county ARPA funds. Uh, Brett and the county attorneys have been through that agreement a number of times, and what's before you is what will be adopted by us and the 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 city or the county commission to be able to have them actually, uh, disperse those funds to us to be able to help pay for that water tank. We've been talking about this for quite some time. This is just the formal agreement to help us accept the award that's already been awarded to us. So if you have questions about that, I'm happy to to do that, to talk about that. And then the last piece is oh nine oh two, two thousand twenty-two, the U dot contract for a possible future purchase of corridor preservation. Essentially, UDOT is willing to enter into an agreement that should they they, uh, acquire or need the property that we're just about to close on on Thursday, by the way, with the with the, um, with the property owner up there just south of Big Oak for the corridor preservation. Should UDOT want that property or need it in the future, this agreement basically says they're gonna pay MAG and the county back the funds that are applicable, whether it's the whole parcel, part of the parcel, whatever it happens to be, to be able to acquire that land and and do what that whatever their purposes are. Uh, that will be the same thing as we go through the next one, as we've talked about going and and visiting with the Maverick folks to get that that piece to go to the north as well, which will really be one of the last potential pieces that we need for corridor preservation in that area and realignment of the Furnace Road. So the a- again, this is just a, it's kind of interesting, a possible future purchase. So it's a maybe, might, possibility is what I would term it as. But if you have questions about that, I'm happy to to go, uh, over that with you. Again, on that one item, on number nine, there is one, uh, I would just ask that you put a a caveat on the any motion that pending legal review. I got one comment back today at like four forty-five and haven't had time to to update that. It's very insubstantial to us, just something that UDOT needs to have in there for their purposes, and and I think it will be fine, but just pending legal review on that item as well. And that's all we have on the agenda, so it should be a short meeting.
I don't have any, I don't have any questions about the agenda items specifically, but talking about the realignment of the Furnace Road, how will the existing businesses that are on one ninety-eight now be accessed? Will there be any access from the south, or is it gonna be just from the north?
At this point in time, that's completely untold. That that, a- as you have seen, there's a there's a three-roundabout scenario there that UDOT has that would provide different access than what's there today, but still similar access. There's other opportunities that could have right-in onlys or right-out onlys. You wouldn't be able to have the crossing traffic with traffic, which is where the problem is mostly at today. Um, so that that's completely untold and will be according to what the UDOT, uh, team comes up with when they reconstruct the the interchange. So I I I don't wanna promise anything, but I don't wanna scare anybody either. It's just one of those things that is completely untold, and as we've talked about, it could be anywhere from ten to thirty years from now. Hopefully, it's sooner than that.
Right.
But that that's where we're at today on it, and and, uh, UDOT has indicated a willingness to work with us as we go through that. We we have expressed a concern that the businesses are going to be concerned about how that gets reconfigured and and making sure that they have proper access ingress and egress, and and we will certainly work with the UDOT team as we go through that, just as what we have been doing.
I asked the question because the business owner reached out to me, so, thank you.
The the intent is not to cut anybody off from businesses. In fact, again, the intent here is to not also build a business where a road needs to go and have to tear a building down.
Right.
Have have UDOT forced to be, make a much more expensive purchase in the future should we have to relocate a home or a business or something like that. So the the intent is is to to preserve as much as we can and yet increase and, uh, improve, sorry, improve the the accessibility and the and the, uh, vehicular traffic traffic movements in the area.
Thank you.
Yeah, you bet.
Okay, other questions on that, concerns? Number three, other business. Can we just go ahead and start regular council meeting at six? We'll be done in four minutes.
Fortunately, no, there was an advertisement.
Has has the city set a date for the fall fall cleanup when we're gonna have dumpsters out at, uh, Old Lanta?
We have, but I don't know what those dates are. They should be on our website, i- if not now, in the very near future. We'll make sure those are on the website and on Facebook.
Okay, thanks.
Have you have you seen that, Jeff, and can you give us dates on it?
Let me see if I can find it.
I'm I'm kinda presuming it's in October.
It was October.
It would be, yes.
When?
That's correct.
Um, give me a second.
So I thought you said, sorry.
Eighth to the fifteenth.
Perfect. There'll be October eighth through the fifteenth.
Thank you.
Councilmember, I call.
Perfect. Any other items of business we need to talk about tonight in our work session? Well, I'll look for a motion to adjourn. Well, I'll look for a motion to adjourn then.
It's almost.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second.
If you don't want to adjourn, then keep talking about something.
Aye.
Councilman Sidaway?
Aye.
Councilman Ica.
Aye.
Councilmember Montoya.
Aye.
Councilman Meacham, aye. We are adjourned until seven P M.
Great.